Good afternoon, everyone, including members of the public who are watching the live broadcast. My name is Mary Lee Seleski and I am the Chair of the Design Review Committee. Welcome to this virtual special committee meeting being held on October 20th, 2021. For those of you that are unfamiliar, the Design Review Committee is a volunteer committee made up of local residents, including several members with professional expertise in architecture, landscape architecture, urban design and structural engineering. The purpose of the Design Review Committee is to aid in the evaluation of site plan approval applications and wind impact assessments for development within the downtown Halifax Plan governed by the downtown Halifax Land Use Bylaw. The Design Review Committee assesses applications for conformity with the downtown Halifax Design Review and Design Manual and advises municipal staff accordingly. So we will start with the roll call and then move into the business. Christina, do we have Christina present? It does not look like it. Charlotte? You just.
There we go. Hi.
Hello. Erica.
Present.
Jan.
I'm here.
Julian? Does not appear to be here yet. Marcel? Thank you. Nathan? Nathan is indicating present, but you're muted.
Yeah, sorry about that. The buttons weren't working. I'm here. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you. Rob?
Yep, I'm here.
And we have regrets from Jessica, Sandrine and Sarah. From the staff members, is Carl with us today?
Afternoon, committee. Hello.
Hello. Maggie Holm?
Good afternoon.
Hello. Jennifer Chapman?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Sarah Knight?
Hello.
Hello. Annie Sherry?
Hello.
Hello. Andrea Lovasi Wood?
Good evening, everybody.
Welcome back, Andrea. And Alicia Wall?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, everyone. So our last meeting was held on September 9th and the minutes were distributed afterwards. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 9th, 2021?
I can move that.
Thank you, Rob. And can I get a second there as well?
I can second it.
I'm Charlotte. Thank you to both. Are there any errors or omissions noted in the September 9th minutes? That anyone would like to bring forward? Seeing none. Okay, so I'll call, I'll now call for the question. All those in favor of approving the September 9th meeting minutes signify by saying aye, contrary minded can say nay. Aye?
Aye.
Yay.
Aye.
Any nays? Doesn't appear. Okay, so the minutes from September 9th are approved. Moving into order of business, are there any additions or modifications to today's agenda, Annie?
Thank you, Chair. The Clerk's Office did not receive any notification of additions or deletions for this meeting. And where this is a special meeting, this addition or deletion would require unanimous consent from all members, regardless of whether or not they are present.
So to the members of the committee, are there any further modifications that you'd like to propose? Seeing none. Okay. Could I have a motion to approve today's agenda? Erica's, is that your hand up or motion?
I was just saying I could motion for it.
Motion. Okay. So motion from Erica and a second there, please.
Second.
Nathan, second. Thank you. So I'll now call the question again to approve the agenda as circulated. All those in favor signify by saying aye, contrary minded please say nay. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Any nays? No. Okay, so the agenda as circulated is approved. Business arising out of the minutes, we have none. So I will call for a declaration of conflict of interests for any of the agenda items that are noted.
I'll have a conflict.
Okay. So Rob, you'll need to turn your camera off and mute yourself during the presentation.
Sounds good.
Okay. Consider any others before we move on? No? Okay. Deferred business, there is none at this time. We'll move on to, oh, Annie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I know this, we only have one, you know, substantial item on the agenda today. But just for the minutes, if the member declaring a conflict of interest wouldn't mind stating which item that is for.
Oh, sorry.
No, no worries. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. I did the wind study.
Okay. So I guess that would be the entire presentation then on the.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll drop off. I'll miss you guys, but.
You'll get some of your day back. Okay, so in terms of correspondence, has any correspondence been received by the Clerk's Office?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No correspondence was received for them, the, from the Clerk's Office for this meeting.
Are there any petitions that we should be aware of?
Thank you, Chair. The Clerk's Office also did not receive notification of any petitions.
Okay. And there are no presentations, no item, information items to be brought forward. So we'll move into reports. First item is upcoming applications. Carl, is there anything that the committee should be aware of for future meetings?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, as you might imagine, the, the number of applications that are sort of en route to this committee, it's, it's lessening with the center plan coming. There is one that's just on the precipice of starting engagement, but it's not quite out in there in the public eye. So nothing to announce at this point. I would say that it would probably be, at least, I would say that it would probably be at least two months before the, there would be anything on the committee agenda is my best guess.
Okay, thank you very much. So that moves us into the main item of our agenda today, which is case number 23663, substantive site plan approval for 1138 to 1146 Barrington Street, Halifax. We'll start with the staff presentation by Jennifer Chapman and then continue on for there. So Jennifer, I will hand the mic over to you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just start sharing my screen. Okay. All right. So you can see that now. All right. My name's Jennifer Chapman and I'm a planner in the Urban Enabled Applications 3 to the Design Review Committee, which is a request for a site plan approval for lands located at 1138, 1146 Barrington Street. So the applicant is Casner Goodspeed Architects. And again, as mentioned, it's located at 1138 to 1146 Barrington Street. The applicant is proposing an eight-story mixed-use building with the restoration of a contributing heritage resource on the parcel. And there will be 143 square meters of commercial space proposed under the new construction and 41 residential units, as well as six units in the heritage building and 11 underground parking spaces, which would be shared between the two buildings. So the proposal is on Barrington Street, shown on these contacts maps, located at the corner of Barrington and Kent Street near the Peace End Friendship Park. And we have the superstore in the West End also in the surrounding area. The lands are presently zoned DH1 and within the precinct 2, which is the Old South Suburb Heritage Precinct. The street is a pedestrian-oriented commercial street and the bonus in this area is calculated by floor area ratio. So there's a pre-bonus of far of two and a post-bonus up to four. The street wall setback in this area is zero to 1.5 meters with a maximum street wall height of 11 meters. And there is a view plane that does exist over the property. So the site here is shown in red. You can see the existing heritage resource located on the map, but the rest of the lot is presently vacant. These are some older pictures of the site. The buildings shown in red have since been demolished. And the building on the corner is the heritage building that will be restored. So this is looking north up Barrington Street. And this is the same street, but looking south. And here we see the site seen from the corner of Barrington Street and Hollis Street. So this is the Barrington Street elevation. We see the two-story street wall, which is the same height as the contributing heritage resource next door. So the applicant was very intentional in that they were trying to match the roof line of the heritage resource to respond to some of the Design Manual criteria. The elevation also shows the entrance to the parking garage, which is located in between this heritage resource and the, the commercial facade. So as this building is in the Old South Suburb, staff have worked quite closely with our heritage planners to ensure compliance with this plan. The developer has had made modifications as we went through it to respond to some of their concerns, which included lowering the overall street wall height, including this mansard roof and using materials that really reflect the, oops, the character of the buildings in the Old South Suburb. Once, once this is complete and the applicant is ready to apply for permits, then the heritage officer would review and issue a certificate of appropriateness. Again, so this is the south elevation of both of the buildings. So you can see some of the, the materials and design is pulled around all sides of the building. And again, we see that same on the western elevations and on the northern elevation. So one of the key items that were really relevant when we considered this, this proposal is how it responds to the Old South Suburb Heritage Conservation District. One of the main criteria in the Design Manual is to encourage cohesive development that supports a setting consistent with the traditional character of the district. So again, as I've mentioned, we did work very closely with our heritage staff when we were reviewing this to ensure compliance with this. And the developer, oops, the developer did seek to make some changes to the building form to respond. Staff do recommend that, in our opinion, this building does meet this criteria and does fit in well with the Old South Suburb Heritage Conservation District. The applicant is requesting two variances. The first is variance one for street wall height. So the minimum street wall height is 11 meters and the applicant is actually proposing only 7.9 meters. So a lower street wall height than is normally required in this area. And the applicant is requesting this to meet the roof line of the heritage resource building beside it. And this request actually helps bring the proposal into further compliance, into greater compliance with the Design Manual. And staff are recommending approval of this based on 3.6.3c of the Design Manual, which states that the street wall height of abutting buildings is such that the street wall height would be out of character. The second variance is for the upper story side yard setback, which is shown outlined in red on this elevation. So section 3.6.6 of the Design Manual allows for the consideration of this variance. In this case, the applicant is requesting consideration under criteria 3.6.6b, which applies where the height of the building is substantially lower than the maximum permitted building height. And the setback reduction is proportional to that lower height. So in this case, the maximum building height is actually that of the view plane, which is shown in that line at the top of the elevation. So you can see that the building height is substantially lower than what the maximum actual allowable building height is. The variance needed is a difference of 1.6 meters in, within that red box. And that is proportional to, to the maximum height. So staff are, it's staff's opinion that this request is consistent with the intent of Design Manual, the Design Manual, and we do recommend approval. So the post-bonus height public benefit, this in the Old South Suburb, this is calculated based on floor area ratio. So the applicant is proposing 1,727 meters squared of additional far. This is multiplied by a factor of point two and a, a dollar amount of $257 dollars per meter squared for a grand total of $89,149.32. The applicant is recommending conservation of the heritage, heritage resource for an estimated total of $93,500. And staff are recommending that DRC, Request Development Officer, do accept this as the proposed post-bonus height public benefit. The applicant did provide a qualitative wind study, which reviewed the impacts of wind on the public realm as well as on the private amenity spaces. And the wind study indicated wind conditions would be comfortable and the conditions would be similar to a light breeze for most of the year. So at this point, staff would like to recommend that the Design Review Committee approve the qualitative elements of the substantive site plan approval application. Approve the two variances to the land use by law requirements regarding minimum street wall height and minimum interior lot line setback. Accept the findings of the qualitative wind impact study and recommend that the development officer accept the restoration of the existing heritage building as a post-bonus height public benefit. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. We'll go through, based on the roll call, to see if there are any questions or clarifications required from the members. I'll start with, with you, Jan.
I don't have any particular questions. I'd like to commend the staff. It sounds like they work really diligently on this and great to hear that they worked in such close collaboration with heritage. I have one just kind of minor technical question. Can you clarify what a mansard roof is?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the question, a mansard roof is that sort of a roof style where a portion of the roof comes down in, and covers the uppermost portion of the building. So I think if I go back to the elevation, you can see it well.
Yeah, the Barrington Street elevation will show.
Right. So the windows are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That's all for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Did you want me to share my, share that or you're coming?
It's not really necessary. I understand now. Thank you.
Next, I don't have Julian on the call. I don't see. So we'll move on to Marcel. Any questions for you today?
No questions for me. Thank you for the presentation.
Okay. Next is Nathan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am Jennifer for a very, very good and thorough report. Just curious as to the heritage restoration of the existing heritage structure, what is going to be included in that?
Through you, Madam Chair. So that is actually included as an attachment in the staff report. But the, the applicant is essentially proposing a full-scale restoration of the building. They are proposing an addition to the, the rear of the contributing resource. But again, in a manner that it's, it's replacing an existing addition that wasn't adding anything sort of to the heritage story of the building. And our, our heritage team felt that the addition in the back was respectful and responded well to the heritage building. So there'll be a lot of work on the internal configuration of, of the building so that they can, I think right now there's four units and this would allow them six residential units as well. There'll be some restoration to the outside in terms of some of the, the building materials that are shown on the elevations, the wood shingles. And, and then the building will have access to the parking garage. So it is actually essentially going to be one building because it'll be connected underground, but it'll appear as two separate buildings. So there will be some work done to connect the building underneath so that these, that these tenants can have access to all of the servicing, the garbage and any parking and storage located in the building.
Thank you. Appreciate the response. That's, that's all for me, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks, Nathan. Rob is out. Christina, I see that you've joined us in the, in the meantime. Did you have any questions?
Yes, yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question. So if this is some heritage building, are there any concerns about the existing building? I don't see any plans. It's very weird to see just elevations. I don't see how the old meets the, the, the new. You're saying that you include new floors, but how is the structure? And how does the structure is included in the old building? And how is the interior of the old building merges with the new building? How is the foundations? Is there anything of this showing to us? Isn't this important? I'm confused. I'm sorry to say this. Another thing is I see there are new elements included, but I don't see how the new materials are included in the old facades. Can you talk a little bit about that? How is the heritage building going to be merged in the, or the new building? Can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Sure. So are you talking about, we can talk about the building materials that on the new, the new building. So they're using masonry and they're using, I believe there's some stone as well as brick masonry on the bottom. And then I believe it's stone in the, in the mid-rise portion to kind of respond to some of the, the heritage character that is found in the Old South Suburb. The existing heritage resource that's going to be maintained with wood shingles. So the, the developer is proposing to use the wood, wood shingle siding on the, the heritage building right now.
So, but my question is, is going to give a gap between the new buildings? Is going to build on top of the other? You know, there are some, some details that is not clear in there. And another thing in terms of construction, how do you adding floors on top of a construction that is not holding that structure that is going to be had on top of that? So what we need, what I would like to understand, how is the, the, that heritage building gonna hold all that, that, all those floors on top of it?
Right. So I think maybe that was an misunderstanding in the presentation. So there's no additional height going on top of the, the heritage building. So that's going to be maintained at two stories. What is happening is in the back, there is an existing addition that's going to be torn down and replaced with a two-story addition in the rear.
Okay, so that now is much clearer. That is very helpful. So do you mind now going back to the facades? Just permit to clarify a few things, if you don't mind. Do you mind to share again your?
Yes, for sure. Yep, I can share this.
Sorry about that.
Nope.
Okay, so this is the heritage building. I'm, I'm trying to do some, oh, it's not possible to do any annotation. So this is the, all the, the old buildings in the front. This is on the back. Now I understand it more clear. I, I got it now. Okay. So my, my understanding here is all this new construction. Is it clear where do I enter? What is the entry? Can you tell us where is the entry door? Because we don't see any plans. It's, it's unclear for us to understand how this, this building working. I just see doors, but I don't see the main door. Is the main door in the middle?
Sure. So there's, there's two entry points. So there's. Yeah. Located right here next, near where the parking garage is. And that parking garage is recessed into the building. But that is where the main residential entrance is to the new construction. And then further down, there is a commercial entrance. And it's going to, it's actually defined by, there's a canopy over top that will really help sort of define that commercial entry point. And as well, then there is another door, another, I believe this one is just like an emergency exit located on the rear. But there's a one main commercial entrance, which is located in this, in the center. And it's got some windows around it to help give that definition. And then the residential is located on the other side.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey, Christina, that is your five minutes. So there'll be a number, other opportunities to ask questions after the other presentation, but.
Thank you. I got it. Thank you.
So moving on, Charlotte, you're next. Did you have any questions?
No, I'm all good. Thank you for the presentation. It was, it was clear to me anyway. Thank you.
Okay. And Erica, anything for you? Erica, you're muted.
My fancy unmute button on my headset clearly isn't working today. Sorry about that. So my question is, why is there a post-bonus? I don't, maybe I'm misunderstanding something, but why is there a post-bonus height on this? If they're not going over the height of what they're allowed because of the maximum view plane?
Right. So that is, um, that's almost older language that we used uh, back when we, the downtown Halifax plan was originally created and it was, it was height. So you, most of the buildings were subject to a maximum building height. And then there was an additional uh, height that you could apply for a post bonus height. And now in the Old South Suburb, they're not using height to regulate um, form. They're using floor area ratios instead. So now the maximum building height is constrained only by any view planes. But the language in the land use by law still reflects that, that other language.
So is it because their maximum floor area ratio is bigger than what they should have? That's why they have to pick, put resources towards the heritage building?
Yes, exactly.
Check. Okay, I understand that. And then the other thing I was just wondering about is the parking garage entrance is on the left-hand side. In my very non-architectural knowledge, to me, it, it kind of messes up the um, street wall height that's next, the building next to it, the heritage building, because it is a little bit taller and kind of breaks that nice straight line. Was there consideration for the parking going on the opposite side by the tree? I'm assuming there was some type of reason why it couldn't go over there and it wouldn't break up that street wall as much.
Right. Well, and I think most of, there's a requirement in the land use by law to sort of give space to these contributing heritage resource buildings. Uh, so there was, uh, and it's, it's a, it's kind of hard to read on the elevations, but that's actually set back from the road. So it's recessed in behind the street wall. Uh, it's a fair bit. Uh, I don't have that information at my finger.
Okay, okay. But you're saying that it doesn't visually make you feel like that line and then up again?
Yeah. So, and, and that's very intentional within the Old South Suburb in order to um, give space to the contributing heritage resource. There's requirements to not build to the street line and right against them. So this is, the applicant is proposing essentially just a driveway there to give that space.
Okay. Cause to me, old heritage buildings are more in a row style. And so by putting the parking there, it takes away from that row-style feeling. Um, whereas I'm thinking if it was on the other side, you get a little bit more of that older feeling. But again, I'm not an expert, um, but that was the only thing that I, I noticed. So they never considered putting the parking on the other side?
Uh, not, not to my knowledge. I think the fact that they weren't.
Space, giving space is more important than, than it reflecting that kind of row-style look.
Right. And there was no ability to um, vary anything. So they wouldn't be able to put any sort of building at the street line there. So there would always be that gap in the street wall.
Anyways, okay, cool. Thanks.
Okay. Um, and all other participants are not present. So um, we'll move on to the applicant presentation. Thank you very much, Jennifer, for your, your presentation. Um, so Dan Goodspeed from Kastner Goodspeed Architects should be present here um, as well as representative from Costa Karmas. I'm available for questions. Um, I will note before we start that you have 10 minutes for your um, presentations. So just to, to keep that in mind as you're, you're going through.
Hello, everyone. I trust you can hear me.
We can, thank you.
Prepared a bit of a PowerPoint. We prepared a bit of a PowerPoint presentation that I think may answer some of the questions that uh, have come forward. Um, as you know, there was a previous proposal provided on this site. Uh, and then we were faced with the requirement to redesign this in accordance with the Old South Suburb requirements. This includes the rehabilitated heritage resource, which is the building you see here on the corner. Uh, the project includes a total of forty-three units in new construction, forty-one in the larger building and two in the addition to the heritage resource and four units in the existing heritage building. This is combined with fifteen hundred square feet of street-level commercial space, which has an increased setback to provide an expanded sidewalk area and underground parking for eleven cars and provision for bicycles. The total lot area is just over, just under eleven thousand square feet, about a thousand square meters. And we have, are proposing a gross floor area of forty thousand one hundred and twenty square feet for an FAR of three point seven three. Next slide, please. You can see here, um, this is the main part of the building and the basement of the building comes over to meet the heritage resource and extends under the addition. That's the way we've connected the old building to the new. The Old South Suburb has a number of setback requirements. Uh, there is a requirement for uh, to create space around the existing building of a twelve-meter setback uh, and a six-meter width. There can be nothing built in this area. That's the chief reason why we've used the, this area for the driveway. So the actual line of the driveway of the garage entrance is set back forty feet from the property line. In addition, um, there is a requirement uh, to be set back for the, for the street wall to be set back um, beyond, pa, beyond the corner of the existing building by a meter. That results in this, in the street wall setback being just over two meters. And then the tower above is set back an additional three meters beyond that. As well, the new building needs to be set back twelve meters from the Kent Street facade. So that provides the space which allows the existing heritage resource to uh, gives it the prominence that it is required under the Old South Suburb rules. Can I have the next slide, please? So this is the existing house, um, that's at the corner of Kent and Barrington. Um, it's a two-story house dating from the late eighteen hundreds. Um, it's been used for most of his life as two residential units, although there is some indication there was some commercial use on the ground floor. To the rear of it is an addition, a one-story addition that's much later than the original house and also very substandard in its quality. There is no foundation. Uh, the floor sits on the ground. Um, there is some evidence of rot in the back corner. It does not contribute to the heritage resource. So we've proposed to demolish that and bring the foundation of the new building over behind the old building to allow us to do the connection. So the rehabilitation work that we have proposed for the existing building, this is aside from work that will be carried out inside to create the new residential units. Uh, but the rehabilitation work includes the demolish, demolition of the addition. We'll stabilize and waterproof the foundation. We'll repair and reinforce the existing framing, provide insulation and air sealing, provide new windows and exterior doors in the existing openings, renew the wood shingles and trim and provide a new roof membrane and roof accessories. We've been, we anticipate the rehabilitation cost for this to be about ninety-four thousand dollars. That meets our requirement for public benefit. That's defined, that Jennifer spoke of earlier. Could I see the next slide, please? You can see here the elevation uh, from Barrington Street. So you can see that we've retrou, we've made efforts uh, to, the design of the new building takes cues from the neighborhood. The street wall is articulated um, and stepped uh, and is provided in proportions. Uh, oh, I think there's an animation here. Uh, it doesn't seem to be showing up. Oh, there we go. Uh, and once more. Yes. And so you can see that there, the new building picks up the rhythm and the scale of the existing building in the corner for the street wall mass. It also picks up the idea of a projected bay, uh, which is found on the existing house. Uh, the street wall height continues the line of the heritage resource. The masonry details used both on the base in a darker color and above. Uh, recall the masonry details that are used on existing larger buildings in the area. The mansard-style roof with the projected dormers um, picks up a, a detail that's common in the Old South Suburb and also bends around the corner, which tends to mark the transition from the area of bigger buildings to the north towards the smaller scaled Old South Suburb buildings to the south. Uh, the next slide, please. No, okay. That's more of the animation. Sorry about that. You can see when you look at the Kent Street elevation that the line of the existing building is picked up through the addition and through the, the new street wall. The addition is purposely very plain and simple to not detract from the existing heritage building. And we have used details that are complimentary to the existing building. Um, slide, next slide, please. Again, this was mentioned by Jennifer. We have two variants is needed to uh, for approval here. One is to lower the street wall, which is uh, intended to reinforce the height and line of the existing building. And the second is to allow a small area on the seventh floor um, to um, to reduce the required step back. We've done this for a couple of reasons, chiefly because it allows us uh, better planning of the, of the units on that floor. And secondly, we recognize that the building is adjacent to an existing parking area. So the impact on the adjacent properties by this modest uh, reduction in setback is minimal. Uh, last slide, please. You can see here um, how the street wall and the scale and the rhythm of the new building reinforce the building, the existing heritage building on the corner. The new building will use two different types of masonry. Uh, a dark masonry for the uh, street wall and the ground floors and a medium gray masonry on the middle of the building. The top mansard effect will be done in a profiled medium gray steel siding uh, with um, the dormers uh, accentuated. Windows will be clear glass with black PVC frames and the railings in clear glass with black aluminum frames. On the existing house, the uh, foundation, the existing masonry foundation will be retained. The walls, the, will be redone in wood shingles in a dark blue state. The mansard roof will be in a medium gray axophone shingles. The windows will be clear glass in white wood frames and the trim in wood and white stain. We've gone to considerable effort um, to, to provide the kind of integrated development that the Old South uh, reflects and requires. And I think you can see from this particular angle that uh, we've gone to great efforts to reinforce the presence of the existing heritage resource. That's the uh, extent of my presentation. Um, I'd be happy to respond to any questions the committee may have.
Great. Thank you very much, Dan. Uh, so we'll go through the roll call again and see if anybody has any questions for you. For you. Um, first is Marcel. Any questions?
Thank you. Um, I'm just wondering if there was any thought given to having bay projections come all the way down to the ground instead of hovering above the street there?
Um, am I, am I turned on? Yeah. Um, basically, uh, we were looking at the projected bay that's on the second floor of the existing house. Uh, also, we felt that uh, not bringing those to the ground allowed for a more positive storefront. Uh, so we can get bigger windows and more interaction between the sidewalk and the commercial space that's there. There's quite an issue these days about trying to make sure that the commercial spaces that are being required in all these buildings are actually viable and transparency is one of the keys in dealing with that.
Thank you. And thank you for your presentation as well.
Okay, uh, moving on, Nathan, any questions for you?
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Um, Dan, thank you for your presentation. Um, just a sort of a quick follow-up to my initial question earlier about uh, the existing building. Um, the ninety-three thousand doesn't seem like a lot to me for what you're accomplishing. I guess the new construction, I'm assuming the extension will be part, uh, or considered part of the new construction. And just to follow up to that is um, uh, from the photos, it looks like that's an existing like rock foundation um, to that building. Any concerns about uh, uh, doing your excavation for your new construction about uh, compromising the stability of the existing foundation?
Um, first to your question on the um, rehabilitation budget. The ninety-four thousand that we pegged there is purely for envelope renewal on the existing uh, heritage building. The costs of the new addition are separate from that, as are the costs for any of the interior refit of the building. So really, this is just the cost for the exterior wall, windows, doors and roof repairs. The second question, um, if I I've gone and forgotten it, um, excuse me.
It's more about just excavating near um,
Oh, yes, sir.
And um, if there's any concerns with.
One thing, one thing, if you um, it will require careful excavation where the new addition to the building is proposed. However, if you look at the um, site as it stands, it's already mostly excavated. That was the remnants of the old buildings that were there. Um, and also, uh, we have that six-meter space by forty-meter deep space that's immediately beside the heritage building. We really aren't, we really do not have a new basement. So uh, we feel that we're, we have a good setback there. We will have to be careful of that existing foundation as we get in behind it, uh, as we come up to Kent Street with the new foundation. But for the most part, the bulk of the existing building uh, should, foundation shouldn't have to be disturbed at all. Um, we're proposing to uh, basically excavate along the existing stone foundation. Uh, waterproof it in the areas that are below grade and then go inside to um, deal with the area that runs from there above to grade, the top three or four feet. So we've looked at it quite extensively and think we can do this without uh, compromising the existing building and all.
I appreciate the answers. I appreciate the answers, Dan. Thank you very much. That's all for me, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next is Christina, any questions for you?
Hi, I just have one question is regarding the out the main entrances addressed the street. For example, the west facade. You have the west facade, you have a sort of the relationship with the street on the on the new building is only a door on the west facade, I believe, and the door seems a little bit above the street. The, what do you call the new entry? How do you reach that entry? So
Not sure I follow your question. The, the, are you talking about the side that faces Barrington Street?
So is on, what do you call the south elevation in Kent?
Okay. There is a new entry door above midway, well, at the end of the existing building and between that and where the addition happens. There's an entry there that's really outside walk level.
Would it help if we brought up the the Kent Street elevation, just for reference?
Sure, that would be slide six in my, slide five in my presentation.
My, my request is really out the building addressed the streets is my, my main request. And so, for example, as you see, the relationship with the street is not leveled. And so the building, that entry is really recessed and it's not at the level of the street. So all the building addresses the pedestrian and how does the people reach the building because it's not universal accessibility? That's my main question. And then my other question is, how do you perceive is going to be the future between the two main buildings? You see the heritage building and the new building, there is a passage. There is a gap between the two buildings. What you see is going to be the future of that gap? Is a public space. Who's going to take care of that space in the future? What do you imagine that that space is going to be like in the future?
Is this the area you mean?
I don't see any cursor, but but is the space between the two buildings, the heritage building and the new building? What is that space going to be used for?
Well, that's
Yeah.
That space is used for a driveway that ramps down to the parking that's under the main part of the building. And then there's a small landscaped area that's adjacent to the heritage building.
Okay. And the relationship between the entries and sidewalks, for example, that south elevation?
Well, I think you've caught me there. I think there is a bit of a blunder in the drawing. The plan is organized so that the door that's on the sidewalk is basically at sidewalk level. Now, mind you, that's not an accessible entrance because you go inside and there are stairs to connect you to the upper floor. I suppose I take that back. It could be an accessible entrance to the ground floor suites. But the entrance that's on Barrington Street is at grade with the sidewalk and runs right in and leads you to the elevators that take you through all levels of the building.
Absolutely, but you have the same problem on the west elevation too. Anyway, it's food for thought. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I have all my questions answered.
Thank you, Christina. Next is Charlotte. Any questions for you, Charlotte?
Nathan brought my concern up, so I'll answer it on my side. Thank you.
Erica, how about you?
Good work this time. No, that was great. Thanks. Very informative, helped me fill in the blanks and I think you did a great job given the constraints and working around the heritage building.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Jan. How about you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious about the commercial space because it is it, is it one space for one commercial activity or the three? Because there seemed to be a little bit of a different sort of view from the, the, the plan and then in your presentation that appeared that they were angled and that there were three, three commercial spaces, but maybe I got that wrong. Just wondered if you
As, as we have it set up right now, there is a single commercial space at about fifteen hundred square feet. The potential is there, given the windows that we have, to subdivide it once to create two smaller spaces. Owner at this point feels that fifteen hundred square feet is what he would like to bring to bring to the market. So we have some flexibility in the future should it ever be decided that maybe two spaces makes sense here. But at the moment, it's conceived as a single retail space.
And if it were to be two, would they enter through the same door? There's just one door.
We would change, we would change one of the large show windows and add a door to it.
I see. Okay. And is that the commercial wall, street wall, is that flat? For some reason, it looked like it was
It's stepped.
Oh, okay.
Right, because the, 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 the street line runs at an angle to the property. And so the, 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 the three bays that are along there are stepped to follow the setback. That actually reinforces the size and scale that we repeated from the existing heritage building. If you want to go perhaps to the very first slide. Yes, so you can see here, these are three steps. Right now, right now, the commercial entry is in the middle one. But it would be possible to add a second commercial entry into either of the ones on either side.
Okay, I guess that's why visually I had the sense that there were three spaces there, but I, I, I understand the explanation.
I can see why you could think that because there are three steps in the side.
Okay, thank you for your presentation and for the answers. Thanks, Madam Chairman. That's all for me.
Thank you, everyone. So I guess, thank you, Dan, for your presentation. Annie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that at this point, we will say goodbye to the present presenters and we move into putting the motion to the floor, but we appreciate your time this evening and thank you for being here.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, so at this time, we have four elements that, four recommendations that have come forward. And we will put those staff recommendations into the chat box. I would ask that we get have a mover and a seconder for that and the mover will need to read out the four recommendations from for the recording. And there they are. So if you could announce by name, if you'd like to move and then read out and then a seconder, please.
I can move this. Recommended that we approve the qualitative elements of the substantial site plan approval application for an eight story mixed use building as shown in attachment A. And number two, approve the variances to the land use by law requirements regarding minimum street wall height and minimum interior lot line setback as contained in attachment B. Number three, accept the findings of the qualitative wind impact assessment as contained in attachment C. And number four, recommend that the development officer accept the restoration of the existing heritage building as the post bonus height public benefit for the development.
Thank you, Nathan. And do we have a seconder for that?
A second, Marcel.
Thanks, Marcel. So now that we have the mover and the seconder, I'll go through the roll call again and if there's any points that anyone would like to discuss or any follow up comments that anyone wants to make now would be the, the opportunity. Marcel, you're, you're first on the list.
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Okay, Nathan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing, nothing further for me.
Okay, Christina? Oh, you're muted, Christina.
I would like to make further recommendations. I would like, for example, the accessibilities, it's something to, for example, what I mentioned in terms of the facades that is not solved, the, the, the exits from some of the facades and even Dan recognized. So that door coming out is not, is not solved. For example, I would like to have this in a recommendation. I'm not, I know is not usual. But for example, the units are very deep and not with various ventilation. This is at least a recommendation we should put. We are making dwellings which are not very healthy. I'm sorry, we should at least put this. The, the lobbies are not very well designed. We might even know how is this going to be designed? This is not very good architecture. Can we at least say something? Because, because this is the committee, whatever you put in there, it's, it's great, but can we at least say something? It's, 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 I don't know, it's sad that we can't say something that will make this into a better design. They still on time to reconsider this. I'm so concerned about this unit, for example, unit A. It's so large and he only has a back door, only one facade. This is not going to be a very healthy unit in the future. Anyway, I'm concerned about this. And then whatever he mentioned, the between the heritage building and the new building, he mentioned about landscape podium. Can we at least ask them to design that landscape? If they don't design, it's going to be no man's land.
Well, the area Christina is between the two buildings is the access to the parcade.
Well, but there is no design. Can we recommend a better design? It's nothing there. Do you think it's enough? They say is a design, do you think is enough?
For the parcade, the access, I, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Well, you think we don't make any recommendations is okay. That is, because there is an entry to the parking lot. There is no, so nothing. Okay, I'm fine. If you think it's enough, at least we make recommendations. A very good detailed design for that landscape area. We shouldn't say anything. At least make recommendations, no?
I guess I'm a little, I, I would look for some guide. Okay, Charlotte, comments?
Hi, just to, to help understand that kind of space a little, if, if I can. There isn't a huge amount of space between the, so the driveway that's going to go into the lot. I think it's sixteen meters or something, twelve meters into a lot to the parking door. And then you have a little space that if I remember correctly is about maybe maximum three meters wide along the heritage building and the driveway. The only opportunity they have in there is very small shrubs or just leave it as grass because if you have too big a tree or any other landscaping done in that area, you could potentially cause damage to the house if it's not maintained properly. So my best guess is they're just going to put lawn and or a few shrubs to, you know, make it look nice. But there is no, like, having a full landscape plan for that area. It's possible. It might be in it as well, but we might not have seen it. But I doubt there's going to be, so it's, it's going to, it's such a small area that it's, it's probably just going to be grass, in all honesty.
Okay, so what you say is in terms of design is already not very privileged area, the fact that they have a narrow passage with a ramp. So if they don't put any urban furniture there, it's going to be an urban, it's like a no man's land. So they have to put some at least urban furniture there in order to not leave it empty.
It's, it's not a very practical area for anybody to, you know, go and sit there or it's not an enjoyable space. It's, it's directly looking onto the driveway going into the garage space and right against the facade of the heritage building. So it would be kind of like if the previous existing buildings were there, the, if you look on on the Jennifer showed us the elevations from before the buildings were demolished. You could see there's, you know, those driveways in between each of those old houses that were there. And it's, it's never really a nice area because in the downtown space, there isn't enough space in between the buildings to do anything with. So in order not to clutter it too much, I think the best bet is a few small shrubs and grass instead of having some furniture in there because the furniture would never be used.
I, I, I rest my case. When I say furniture, it doesn't need to be any benches, but it needs to be some design, some whatever you call it landscape, but it needs some design. Okay, but I, I rest my case. I'm okay. It seems like I'm, I'm the only one fighting for an area to have some design and not be a leftover space, so I'm okay.
I, I think like your perspective is valid and it's good to be voiced, but I feel in viewing the plans and the conversation from Dan that there's been so much thought into the building that they will likely do shrubbery or animate the space in the best way possible for the use case. So that's why I feel comfortable not putting in any specific recommendation. But accepting the recommendations from the committee. In past cases, when there's a really gaping hole in the addition of thinking about the design as a whole, then we may put in specific recommendations. But I think in this case, there's a level of comfort given the presentation, but I don't want to speak on behalf of the rest of the committee. I'm just going on my experience from buildings that we've considered where we don't feel they've used the space and there needs to be specific recommendations.
Okay. So in that case, we're not even going to write anything about that back facade. That spacing between the back wall and the existing retail fence and the building. We're going to leave it like this. We're not going to make any recommendations about this back wall.
I think merrily, if you don't mind. So the committee can really only respond to quantitative and qualitative aspects of the design review manual. And so if we were going to not accept the quantitative aspects, we'd be thinking of it on a, on a whole. And so I think it's just tough to not accept the qualitative. Is it qualitative or quantitative? Now I'm getting screwed up. Those elements based on like one small specific thing. But again, I don't want to speak on behalf of the committee.
I guess just before we, we debate that, Annie had I guess just before we we debate that, I I Annie had her had her hand raised. Just wanted to make sure we're getting everybody.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um yeah, I just wanted to um kind of note that, you know, if there are. Kind of questions uh specific to the design manual. Um if it would, if it would be within the committee's purview to, you know, put forward. And, you know, either requests for um like conditions that perhaps planning staff could advise um on that. But um yeah, just wanted to 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 put that out there. Um but also did just want to say that in terms of allocating time for for remember, we're we're at over five minutes for this number.
Okay, well, why don't we continue through the group and just see if there are any other concerns noted, and then we can. Can circle back if if we need to, if that's okay Christina?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Um so where did Christina, uh Charlotte, were there any comments or questions? That you wanted to make?
No, I think um I think it's all good. I I was um surprised at the colors they've chosen, but. Uh looking at the the existing house again, it it makes sense. Um so all good.
Okay, uh Erica, any comments for you?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, uh Jan, any comments for you?
Uh the only comment I make is that um I guess I appreciated the challenge that they had. Between balancing the historical nature of or maintaining the historical character. Of the district and 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 trying to build new, but while respecting the old. And that maybe there some of the constraints related to, I don't know, windows or light. Um would have been because of that balancing act. Thank you, that's that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I I didn't have any questions. We've we've gone through all the participants. I didn't have any questions during the presentations. Um but um I guess from my, just my comments on the on this. Um from a accessibility standpoint, I think the new building will have to be built to be barrier free accessible. Um so although. What the drawings that we're seeing at this point might not be fully fleshed out. I think that building we don't have to worry about, and it has elevator access for accessibility. Um they did note that the heritage building would have. Barrier free accessibility, although that elevation is not accurate, and he did comment on that. Um to the ground floor units, but being a heritage building, it. Could be grandfathered in for the upper units, that it wouldn't be required to be um barrier free. So I don't necessarily have issues there. Um similar to. Uh Charlotte's comments about the parcade, that's not as big an issue for me, just because it is a driveway, but I'm I'm open to hearing comments. From uh from the group if there's other concerns. So I guess uh are, is there an interest from the group overall in making any? Um comments or or as as Annie had suggested about some of the qualitative elements? I don't see any. Um is it, oh Nathan?
Sorry, Madam Chair, thank you. Um I mean, what is in our sort of power at this point in time to add amendments of? To the motion on the table if if that's the kid, if that's what people wish to do.
And this may be a question for for Carl or uh Jennifer, I guess. Number one, we're to approve, our our recommendation is to approve the qualitative element. So if we disagree with the qualitative elements of the. Application, then we. You know, that obviously comes into play. Carl, I see you've got your camera on. If you want to jump in here, feel free.
Uh hello, Madam Chair. Um so the committee's options are are the the same as as usual. The the committee has the ability to approve, refuse, or refuse with conditions. Um the committee could, if the committee decides it's uh they have two decisions to make. It's to, it's one to approve the variances, and then the other to approve, as you said, the qualitative elements. So if if you feel that uh the qualitative elements are not met, you could state what those are and and refuse it. The other option is you could prove with conditions. So to say, yes, you approve this subject to um. You know, adding landscaping in certain areas or or what whatever the conditions may be. Uh the other option would be is that you um you uh you approve the development. And and other committees uh or other versions of this committee, they've approved the development and then made sort of suggestions to the developer. This or and the architect and the designers. The the suggestions are not binding. They are not required. But uh and they they need to be minor, because ultimately our development officers need to hold up the set of plans that you've approved here. And uh against the light uh and hold them up against the light, against the ones that they get for the development permit, and they need to be pretty close. But if it's a function of adding landscaping some areas or or something minor. Um it's it you you could make a, you could approve it with the added suggestion to architect, developer owner, whoever it may be. For introducing the following elements into the plan as it continues to evolve on its way to a building permit. Is that helpful?
I think so. Thank you, Carl. Christina, did you wanna?
In that case, I would like to make as a suggestion. I would like, I I would like to insist. Because if you look carefully, there is in the drawings, there is a careful landscape design. In the in the in the front of Barrington Street, to the point that they designed. The pavement in in Barrington Street. The rest of the streets, there is no careful in that point. So my suggestion is to add to the point that the landscape is a careful landscape design. To address the other streets. And that is my suggestion that we should include there. The urban relationship in terms of landscape should be as careful as Barrington. I would have that. And even though if you think that in between the two buildings, they would be careful. We should make that recommendation. Because to me, the fact that we have an entry to the to the to the to the to the to the garage. And the fact that is a narrow passage by itself is not a very good thing. And we need something else, so a very careful pavement, a very careful possibility of that passage. Will be something the future, we would like to see a proposal. And they will proposal and they will implement that is something that I would like to see. So I would like that recommendation in my point of view. I don't know what the people think, but I would like to see it designed. As the same as they designed the pavement in front of 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 Barrington Street.
So are are you comfortable with that being a suggestion as as Carl noted?
Yes, at least that.
Okay. I'm seeing some nodding heads on the screen. Would the rest of the committee support? The approval of of the recommendations or the, oh, sorry, Annie, plus a suggestion for the a landscape. Detailing it along the parcade. Sorry, Annie, before.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh so I'm I'm just trying to to get the language uh correct here. And think that I could potentially use um a little bit of help uh from from planning staff um. It because I, what I think needs to happen here is that uh this would kind of be in, put forward as an amendment. To the uh to the motion as it is currently written, kind of with like an additional. Um with an additional caveat at at the end, uh just to. You know, so that folks are aware of kind of, you know, what is being voted on here, and then uh that amendment would be uh would then be voted on. Um so I I I think that the wording here could be something along the lines of um. Consideration given to a more detailed landscaping design in front of Barrington Street. And in the narrow entrance to the parcade.
I think Christina, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you're okay with what's happening along Barrington Street, but you would like that to continue. Um along the side beside the parcade entrance.
Exactly, exactly. So we would recommend to have more detail along the parcade. Uh. Yes, along the parcade.
Adjacent to the heritage building.
Well, uh adjacent to the the landscape building, exactly.
Madam Chair, if I might step in just to, just for a moment here, Maggie Holm, I don't think I've met all of the members here before. Um I'm the principal planner with the urban enabled uh planning team, and I work on these applications with all the planners that come before you. Um the the one thing I would point out is the direction you're giving is being given to the development officer. So think about it being something that they can look at. Carl kind of pointed out before, you're gonna hold up two sets of drawings and compare them almost. And so, you know, the suggestion, if that's where you're going for, is to suggest something that they can then look at the drawings and go. It looks like they, you know, did or didn't do that suggestion that the committee also provided, along with the recommend, the recommendation for approval. So if it gets approved, and then there's a recommendation for subsequent treatment somewhere, it should just be worded in a way that the development officer is clear about what's being asked. Of them to look at.
So do you have any suggestions? Is is there a way that it would be more clear for 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 you in the future?
Uh well, it wouldn't be me, it'd be a development officer, but um uh I think you're kind of along the lines, I don't know, Annie, if you want to read out what you have. Um that that would help me. And it sounds like it's the landscaping treatment that you're concerned about, so I would say that is part of. You know, the language should be the landscaping treatment that, you know, directionally goes this way along the building.
What if you don't, I hate to be the opposite minded person, but what if you don't want that? What if I don't want that in the motion? Because I'm I'm just afraid of us being overly prescriptive and saying we need to add landscaping. When it's such a narrow space and and then they go and add a bunch of bushes, and then like there's not even like a walkable. Like I like the idea, personally, I like the idea of it just being grass open space, because it is such a narrow thing. There's a driveway. Then there's like a budding building right there. So if we ask them to put a bunch of.
Landscape does not mean green areas. It means just a treatment. It could be a pavement, but it has to be. It's an outdoor space and it needs to be treated as that.
Okay.
Can I see the picture? Can I see the picture of the building again, so that I can just feel? To suss out whether or not I feel there isn't a treat, there isn't enough treatment?
And then I think Charlotte had a comment, and then Annie had, yeah.
What are, sorry, Madam Chair, if I may, um so I just want, so right now, uh just in terms of process wise. What we're doing as a committee is I am working the wording of uh an amendment that is being put forward. And the wording that I am working with is that there is consideration being given to the uh to a more detailed landscaping. Treatment design in the narrow entrance to the parcade. So that's kind of what I'm working with now, but. Uh in, so consideration is not like the a binding aspect of of the motion. It would be something for uh the development officer to consider um on this front. And then in terms of, you know, members uh having, wanting to, you know, other de- debate. Or discuss whether or not they are comfortable uh with that being put forward. The amendment would be put forward and discussion occurs, and then folks will vote on whether or not they would like that amendment to be put forward.
Sorry, Annie.
No, I just wanted to make sure that every, we have, you know, that everybody's kind of working with the same tools here. That's uh, yeah, trying to get everybody on the same page.
Okay, so before we forget, Charlotte, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Uh can we have the the elevation, just like Erica asked real quick? And I think maybe uh the front uh front view, keep going. That one, yep. Um uh maybe, you know, keep going, so we have um from above. I can't remember which slide it was, I'm sorry. Yeah, there we go, so. Looks like we have approximately uh one point five to two meter gap between the existing heritage building. And the driveway lane. Um having a one point five to max two meter gap in there. Um in terms of landscaping, they're gonna go for the cheapest option uh possible. That's generally what I find in, when I get uh requests to, what's it called? Um to edit landscaping after the building has been done, um working for a landscape company. And most of the time, they put shrubs young that are gonna grow way too big, and in the end, it's not gonna be maintained properly. So I understand that it doesn't have to be greenery. If we have a bit of a detail indeed of what they're gonna do. But I think either it's gonna be paved or it's gonna be um just lawn, which would be, either would be good option. Um. But yeah, we can, we can put a, what's it called? Uh I. Uh I'm not. The slight, it's not the recommendation, it's the suggestion, the suggestion, but probably not a recommendation, because it's. Um I'm pretty sure it's it's probably gonna be just paved or put um grass put on there.
I mean, Dan's here, can he just, like, if they have a plan for it, should they say?
Yeah, there's that. So the, it's just been posted in the chat uh that consider, the suggestion that consideration. Be given to a more detailed landscaping design along the entrance to the parcade adjacent to the heritage building. So it's a suggestion, it's not binding for the applicant, but it asks them to at least look at it and consider it. Does that address, I see you nodding Christina, does that address her?
I think my, what I would like them to consider is not to leave it as no man's land.
Okay.
Because in the future might just be a continuation of a pavement from Barrington Street. But it needs to have an attentive look, because it's the in between space and that space. If he doesn't have a careful attention, it will be in the future something for people to live. Uh you know, just leftover things, and it cannot be, it's a public space. And that's why we want to have a nice pavement, maybe some flowers, whatever, but it needs to have an attentive look. And if they know that we are, we we already have them to look at this, they will have an attention to look at it. And it's a good place, that's let them know.
Okay, so just in terms of our process, Annie, we need to vote. To amend the recommendation to add on the consideration that you've noted in the chat. Is that correct? And we need a mover and a seconder?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um so yes, there, the the emotion to amend uh would need. We have, I believe, the mover from Christina, but just want to ensure that um before finalizing that process. Because it would also require a seconder, then would go to um, you know, the discussion and a vote. Um I just want to uh check in with our staff and Maggie Home to um. Ensure that the wording of the proposed amendment that's been put forward in the chat um would would be.
Yeah.
Having a quick look here. I mean, honestly, the recommendation would go along with your 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 minutes to the development officer. But really where it's going is back to the applicant, and you're saying, you know, it's it's highly recommended that we ask you to look into this. It's not, it's not required. You're not requiring it as part of your approval, but you're really just giving additional feedback back to the applicant, that there's something you're asking them to give another look at, in essence. Um so if it shows up at the development officer's desk with or without this thing that you're asking for. Either option is okay. It's really directed back to the applicant and giving them some some additional feedback. And what you've said is consideration given to more detailed landscape design along the entrance to the parcade adjacent to the heritage building. Seems to be directive enough to be to tell me what the thing is you're looking for and what general area it is that you're asking that to be, again, to have a second look at.
Okay.
So Christina, can we consider you the mover on on this amendment to the the recommendations?
Thank you.
Uh is there a seconder in the group then?
I'll set Marcel.
Thank you, Marcel. Okay, so now we'll need to vote to add the amendment to the recommendation. Okay, so now we'll need to vote to add the amendment to the recommendation and then we can vote on the recommendations themselves. Um, so for uh anybody in favor, please to amend um and add the consideration clause that's in the chat. Um, can you please say yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Yay. Any contrary, say nay? Okay. So I think the amendment has passed. Um, I guess I'll put it out to the group. Are there any further comments about the recommendation, the, sorry, the amended recommendation as it stands now? We good? Okay. So in that case, we'll call for the vote. Um, if you are in agreement to the recommendation as amended, um, everybody that is in favor, please say aye.
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 Any contrary, say nay? Okay. And the motion has passed uh with the with the recom- recommended amendment. Annie, do I, did I do that right? You've got your hand up.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. And I just wanted to clarify for the what will be in the minutes and what was just voted on is the recommendation as amended. So that the, what was just voted on is the the fifth point that we put back into the recommendation as a whole. I just wanted to make sure that that was um put out to to the committee.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Thank you for guiding me through that as well. Um in terms of our remaining agenda items, we have no preliminary uh presentations, uh, nothing for committee members or added items. Uh, the date of our next meeting is coming up quite quickly because this is a a special meeting, so we are scheduled for November fourth. Um, but we will wait to see if there are any applications uh for that, that meeting, which did not sound like there would be, but we'll see. Um, so if that's the case, uh, I can ask, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Christina, a motion and so that uh the meeting is adjourned at six oh four P M. So thank you very much, everybody, for your